I am Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. This is the TPZ meeting for April 8th. I will start with a roll call of the Commission members for the evening. Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Robert Canto.
Here.
Roja Afshar.
Present.
Scott Halston.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
I will note for the record, David St. Germain is absent tonight. Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Kyla Zimmerman. I don't think Kyla's on yet. All right, so Kyla is not in yet, and I'll note for the record, Mike Tucci is absent this evening. And here it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Sanford. I'm Acting Chair. Tonight, it's April 8th, 2024. Go Huskies. And welcome to the Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. First order of business is because we have some absences, I need to appoint Bruce Polsky as a voting member today. He's an alternate and he's up. Okay? Do you accept that?
I accept. I'm prepared.
Thank you. Okay. Matt, can I call on you to read the legal notice, please?
Sure. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, April 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Jack Kemper, application for special permit for expansion of home and ridgeline protection area at 16 White Oak Road, our 80 zone. Jennifer Villa, application for special permit for event permit, music on the farm, summer music series at 303 and 84, 87 Meadow Road, R40 CR Zone. 877 Scott Swamp LLC, application for special permit and site plan approval to construct contractor's storage buildings on lot 8774 and 172 Scott Swamp Road, CR Zone. Town of Farmington, application for special permit and site plan approval to install a splash pad, pickleball courts and accessory buildings to house equipment, restrooms for splash pad and pickleball courts at 14 West Woods Drive, our 40 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 21st day of March 2024, Town Plan and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. Let's start with new business. Excuse me.
Okay, the first item is for me, AERC. It's our Architectural Design Review Committee. These members are volunteer committee appointed by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission by architectural oversight and comments with respect to applications in our center zones, our Unionville Center, Farmington Center, and to a certain degree, the midpoint development district. So there are five reappointments due this year. It's Jack Kemper, Bob Sanford, Sheldon Crosby, Peter Van Beckham, and Tim LaBoutier. All gentlemen have been contacted. All are in agreement for another three-year term, so if the Commission agrees, then these gentlemen can be reappointed.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions before we move on? Okay, can I get a motion to approve this reappointments?
I'll make the motion. I'm going to make the motion to reappoint Jack Kemper, Bob Sanford, Sheldon Crosby, Peter Van Beckham, and Tim LaBoutier for a three-year term.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, and all opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I've got the next two as well. So the next one is the 8-24 referral for replacement of HVAC equipment on the roof at the Town of Farmington Police Department, as well as replacement of the roof. In 2023, the Town of Farmington Commission an HVAC system condition analysis report for the four town-owned buildings, Town Hall, the Police Department, the Senior Center, and the Highway Garage. The Police Department was determined to be the most critical as the system frequently fails, requires unscheduled repair calls, and are at the end of their useful life. As an example, the air conditioning units were inoperable for approximately six weeks this past summer. The Police Department roof is 22 years old, original to the building, and has leaks that frequently require repair. It's scheduled to be replaced in next year's capital budget. The ACUs, the air conditioning units are rooftop units, and it'll be more efficient and economical if the roof is replaced at the same time that the ACUs are installed.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Okay, can I have a motion to a request for a report? I'm not quite sure how to phrase.
It's for a positive referral back to Town Council.
Okay, so can I have a motion to offer a positive referral to Town Council on this issue?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to offer a positive referral back to Town Council concerning the replacement of an HVAC system and roof of the Town of Farmington Police Facility locally located at 319 Britton Avenue, Unionville.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next one is another 8-24 referral from Town Council. It's a request for report concerning replacement of roof at West Woods Upper Elementary School, located at 50 Judson Lane. There was a summary provided. There's a condition assessment of the West Woods roof as original to the 2002 building, making it 22 years old. It's comprised of almost 36,000 square feet of BUR, which is built-up roof material, and 66,000 square feet of asphalt shingle roof. The most recent roof assessment category is the majority of the roof in fair condition with penetrations and the Burr roof promoters and roof flashing as having in need of repair. So there's a sample of what the Burr material roof looks like and the asphalt shingle roof. The project scope includes construction and design in 2024, construction in 2025 to remove and replace all roofing material, flashing, and roof drains. The Burr areas will be replaced with EPDM membrane roofing with a 30-year warranty, and the shingle areas will be replaced in kind. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions concerning the report? Okay, so can I have a motion for a positive referral to the Town Council?
I can make a motion. Make a motion for a positive referral to the Town Council for the replacement of the roof at West Woods Upper Elementary School located at 50 Judson Lane?
Great. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. That is also okay. And now we need to accept some applications. Who would like to accept our first application? Who would like to make a motion?
I would do that. Just, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit for 162 Wood Pond Road in Marin Galvin for a detached accessory dwelling unit above an existing detached garage in the R20 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of May 6, 2024.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Okay, thank you. So moved. Okay, and our next, this is concerning accepting a subdivision application. Who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the subdivision application by Farmington West Estates Limited Partners for Snowberry Lane and Governor's Pride for a 10-lot subdivision of Governor's Pride Phase 6A and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of May 20, 2024.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all in opposition? Okay, thank you very much. That's all the new business taken care of. Okay, next is public hearings. And before we move on to that, I just want a couple of comments about how things will work. Just a brief explanation. The applicant will present to the Commission. Commissioners will ask questions of the applicant. Then we'll open to public comment, first in the room and then any online. Once all public comment has been received, we'll ask the applicant to respond. And we ask that you keep your comments limited to about five minutes per person. And if your comment echoes those of previous speakers, it's okay to just say, "I agree with what they said," rather than restate your comments. And we share these guidelines to be respectful of both the public's and the Commissioner's time. Public comment is extremely valuable to us and is an important part of this whole process. We want to hear from everyone. Okay, so our first public hearing of the night is the Town of Farmington. And please come on up and make your presentation. Yeah. Hi.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Russ Arnold, and I'm the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer for the Town of Farmington. With me is Dylan Riley, our Civil Engineer. We're here to talk and present tonight our infamous splash pad and pickleball complex or facility that we're trying to get done. It's going to be located at West Woods Golf Course in the field east of the parking lot and behind the firehouse. The plan is on the board now. So we're going to have four pickleball courts, a office building in the middle, and a splash pad on the north side in blue. The splash pad will be, everything will be running off its individual pumps, all the different toys, if you will, the mechanisms. They will be self-started after all have a button on everything. The building itself will be used for storage, changing rooms, men's and women's changing rooms, a office space, a small office space for an attendee to be there, an electrical room, and a mechanical room. The four pickleball courts, as you see to the south, you'll see on the east side of that, you'll see an area similar in size. We put that in our bid as an alternate to try and get as many pickleball courts as we could during the bidding process. Unfortunately, we just don't have enough funding for it. Pickleball, as you may or may not be aware, is a really new sport that's taken off. I play a little bit myself. I'm not that good at it, but we try. But a lot of people do enjoy it. A lot of courts around are very, very popular, very busy. So we're trying, you know, at least we have the room. We can expand if need to in the future. Dylan will be here. He'll talk about the parking lot, the drainage that we got to do and associated with the project. This was approved on April 3rd at Wetlands. So we met all their conditions and requirements through our process there. One thing I want to say in front of everybody, you may or may not have been up to the site yet. Based on our schedule with the Highway Department, we're doing all the site work, prepped and everything for this project. So I had the guys go up on Saturday with it being a nice day. We had a big pile of material that was stockpiled there. We spread that out. We stripped the top soil off and whatever. It's not subsoil, but it's really on the top. It was from what was left over when it was being farmed, all the rocks and everything. So that's all been stripped ahead of tonight's meeting. And we did that based upon our schedule and our personnel. So it wasn't, we weren't just going willy-nilly, just trying to do what we got to do and think we're the town and can do that. I just want to put that out front. We did that based on our schedule and limited people. We have a lot of paving to do this year. We've got a lot of other projects, drainage projects we're going to get done. We took advantage of the Saturday to get ahead of the rain coming so that we weren't set back a little bit for that. So just wanted to put that out there for the Commission's own knowledge. If you hadn't seen it, that's what we did up there. Dylan's going to talk now about the parking and the drainage.
Good evening, Commission members, public, and other applicants. My name, for the record, is Dylan Riley. I'm a civil engineer here for the Town of Farmington. Tonight, I'll be discussing the parking lot expansion and the added drainage at the facility. The parking lot expansion highlighted here in yellow on the plan sheet approximately adds 80 spaces to the existing parking lot, bringing our total to 184. We also added three ADA spaces along the side of the parking lot where the splash pad and pickleball courts will be to provide ADA parking for those facilities as well. We also included the deletion of a few parking spaces in the existing parking lot and created a walkway, pedestrian walkway from the clubhouse or golf course to the pickleball courts and splash pad. This same walkway also appears in the parking lot expansion area north to serve the same purpose. To the north and west of the parking lot expansion, we had to add some drainage trenches. These are stone trenches. The stone will be at the surface at ground level to allow for sheet flow runoff into the trenches and perforated piping. The perforated piping will carry the stormwater runoff into the underground detention systems adjacent to both trenches. These are hydrologically sized for a 100-year storm event as per regulation. Then everything will be discharged to the northwest corner of the golf cart path out of two outlet pipes into the existing storm drainage swale. If I may just touch upon the splash pad. The splash pad is fed by the existing water utility service that will be extended. And the parking, or the pickleball courts have a dashed line around them, which will be additional electrical conduit for future court lighting should funds become available for that as well. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing I want to talk about. The building itself, it's going to be a metal-framed building. It'll be on a concrete foundation. It'll have vinyl siding, which will match the existing building colors up there. Don't quote me on the color. It's cream. It's a yellowy, cream color. We're going to try and match as best we can so that we're not putting something crazy in there to change the color scheme. The roof will be metal. It'll be black metal. The hours, what we're, I've talked to several other towns, West Hartford, Bristol, who have new courts recently installed. And West Hartford has lights on their courts. It shuts over by Wilket Park, by the mall. They shut off at 10 o'clock at night. As Dylan mentioned, we're going to put electrical conduit in the ground because it's easier to do it now than to come back and do it later. We just don't have the funding to install the lights at this point. But our goal, we've been talking, in Bristol, it's basically sunup to sundown. And those courts are on Shrub Road, which is off of Stafford, Stephen Street, I'm sorry, Stephen Street. It cuts over to Route 69. And that's in a very residential neighborhood. And they haven't had any complaints. I spoke with Bristol City, the City of Bristol Parks and Rec. It was anticipated that there's going to be too much noise and everything, and people were really worried about it. But after the courts went in, they haven't had any complaints to date. It was basically worried about how it was going to be beforehand. So that was a good thing. I played on those courts. It gets loud from the people there, but at dark, it's done. So our hours are proposing to do 7:00 AM in the morning. Obviously, it's not going to be there in the winter. They'll play in the winter as weather permits, but go to sunset. And the reason I say sunset is if we do dusk, there's really not a definition in our ordinances for dusk. So if we do sunset, that is a standard. It'll be a standard time. Plus, it gets pretty dark, so people typically move off the courts. And the splash pad, we're talking probably 10:00 AM to 7:00, weather permitting. So we'll be able to monitor that. And what we're putting in for the system on that is we'll be able to monitor the water flow remotely. So we don't have to have someone there making sure that the water's off or anything like that. So that's one of the things that we really looked into, how to handle that and do it really as efficient as we can. So I think the hours are representative of the time the golf course is going to be open during the warmer months. The splash pad, to be honest, pick the number. Is it 9:00 AM? Is it 10:00? Is it cold? I don't know. I don't go to a splash pad myself, so I don't know what the typical hours are. But to 7:00, 7:00 PM, figuring the age group that's going to be here, that probably won't be much more than that anyway. So those are, I think those are the highlights that I wanted to bring up in front of you tonight. And if you have any questions, be more than glad to try and answer.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you very much. Okay, let's start with some Commissioner questions. Matt?
Questions just about the splash pad in general. Looks pretty flat. Is this treated or chlorinated water that's going to be used here?
It's, yeah, it's public water.
Public water.
And it'll be tied into the sanitary sewer system.
Okay, but it's not further treated to be highly chlorinated the way our pool would be?
No, not at all. It's just standard. It's come right out, like right out of your tap if you're on Connecticut water, public water.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Bye.
All right. Couple of things, because now I'm curious. To go back to the splash pad. So there's going to be like, for lack of a better way to put it, the water's not going to be recycled. It's just going to come out, flow in, next person comes in, and it basically, so it's a constant flow.
Correct. To go to a recycled system, we couldn't afford to have everything here. It's too expensive. It's basically, we'd have a small treatment plant here to recycle that water.
Gotcha.
And in talking with, I've called a bunch of other towns in the state. I even called the City of Boston, because we have a couple of kids up there, and we go up and we see them all the time. And I called, and they're like, "We don't use that much water." It doesn't, it's not like the water goes from zero to a million.
Gotcha.
There's going to be an expense to it, yes, but overall, over time, having that treatment system and making sure that keeps upgraded and updated and maintained is less than the use of the water.
Perfect. That's what I was figuring. And then I'm assuming there's going to be like, for lack of, there's going to be no like ponding, so you don't need any supervision or any lifeguarding or anything like that?
No, no. Everything drains right out. It's relatively flat, but it drains through our drainage system that goes through our sanitary sewer.
Okay. And then, so now this is me getting curious. Onto the pickleball. How long does an average pickleball game last?
Well, if you know how big you are.
Right.
Probably a couple of minutes.
Couple of hours?
Yeah. It could be about 10 minutes. Yeah. So you play to 11.
Okay.
And it's basically, you have two teams of two play each other. And a game could last 10 minutes. It could last 15 minutes. And then a lot of it is round robin. Then you're switching, or if you go with a group, you know, three other individuals, you guys will just play and just keep playing until you get tired. The Parks and Rec Department puts on a pickleball class tonight that I'm missing. It's okay. I'm glad to be here. Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays over at New Horizons. And there's probably, each night, there's probably 40 people there.
Wow.
On four courts. So you have people, you're constantly moving. You sit for, you know, sit for about 10 minutes and you jump up and you're back in again. And that's what we would do here is Bristol, like their setup, they have a pipe up there that you hang your mallets on, your rackets. And you basically watch. You put them on our court. Each hanger has a court designated for it, and you hang your racket up. And when your turn comes up, you jump up and play.
So it's almost like the quarters on the pool table type?
Exactly. If you're back in that day, yes. I didn't want to age you, but yeah. It's basically, you're just waiting your turn, and they're about 10 minutes, 10, 15 minutes. Yeah, it's a lot of turnover. It's really good.
Interesting. All right. Yeah, no, I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited. I was curious.
We'll play.
Yeah, all right. Be easy on me.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you for being here tonight and your presentation. Very excited. As Commissioner Cantor also mentioned, glad to see that our town is expanding fun activities. Again, Commissioner Cantor touched upon it, but I also wanted to maybe make sure a little further about the splash pad. So it seems like it's a little riskier activity than golf or pickleball. Is there any precautionary mechanisms that the town is planning to put in place? Or, I don't know, a place with a first aid kit that people can, you know, if they get hurt and fall, you know, slip and fall, they can use as a, you know, first aid?
Yeah, so we'll have a first aid kit on both sides of the building. One for the pickleball side, one for the splash pad side. We'll have, on each side of the building, we'll have rules and safety tips. And we'll also have 911 number is there. And kids are also part of our rules and regulations. Dylan and I were going over this last week. You can't just drop off your five-year-old and leave. Somebody has to be there. You have to have an adult with your children. So it's not a babysitting situation, so there has to be an adult with your children or with the children that you bring with you. Our plan is to have somebody in the office as a, you know, a contact if something happens and go to and figure things out from there. But yeah, we're going to have first aid kits and things like that. But the floor of it, the deck of it, is really, it's a non-slip deck. You know, things happen, you know, we understand that, but it is truly a system that it'll be very difficult to get hurt at if you're fooling around. It's not sticky, but it will, it's very non-slip even for when it's wet. So we hope, I can't promise you and guarantee you no one will fall down, but kids will be kids too, so.
Thank you very much. That's awesome.
Thank you. Bruce?
Just further to what we were talking about, has there any increase in our insurance from a liability perspective, having these?
Not that I know. I talked with Joe. He has looked into it, and it basically falls under a standard policy.
So be it. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Halston, Scott?
Thanks, Liz. Just a quick question to confirm, Russ. So the water just shuts off on the off-hours? Is that how? Okay. Now, I know this project's very much anticipated in town. It's great to see it come to life. Appreciate the presentation. I'm all set.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And Kyla, are you on? No?
I'm not saying Kyla logged on.
Okay. Okay, well, it's my turn. I just want to say, this is wonderful. God, 10, 12 years ago, when I was on Community Chest, people were pushing, "We need a splash pad. We need a splash pad." I'm very glad that we are getting this because it will just benefit the entire town. We don't have a town pool to go to, so this will be a great opportunity. I'm really glad that the, excuse me, the town is moving in this direction. My one quick question was, how many ADA parking slots are we adding?
Oh, we're adding three. We'll have a total of six. There's three existing and three new. Along with the pedestrian, they're next to the pedestrian aisle. You see.
Okay.
Shannon's pointing them out right there. They're right there.
Okay, great. So they're in the right smack, close to everything.
Correct.
Okay. And the parking is well-suited for, I've gone to the driving range over there a couple of times, so I know it doesn't get too full.
Yeah, no, I think we'll be okay. And we also, we have a little bit of room if we need to add more parking in the future, should this really take off more than we anticipate. It's either right, Shannon, right there. We can park some in there. And also to the back to the north, if you could slide up, please. We could expand the parking along the driving range and in between the splash pad and the driving range.
Okay.
So there is room for expansion.
It would be wonderful if that's our problem.
Yeah, exactly.
That would be a big problem to have that things are so prob- so popular. So, okay, thank you very much. Uh, now, are there any questions from, uh, the public? Any questions or comments, uh, from anyone in the room? We'll start there first. Come on up, state your name and, uh, come on up to the podium, name and address and speak. Please do. Um, first of all, I'm fighting getting bifocals, so I'm going to put on two pairs of glasses. Um, okay, uh, received a registered letter. Just your name and address? Sorry, Susan Helm, three Greencrest Drive, Farmington, Connecticut. Uh, received the registered letter on April second at my home, um, for this meeting on the eighth. Walt and I are homeowners on Greencrest Drive, one of the two streets, along with Pine Hollow Road, across Route one seventy-seven from Westwood's Drive. We were aware of the open green space owned by the town on Westwood's Drive before we purchased our house on Greencrest Drive in nineteen ninety. And so we went to the Farmington Town Hall to inquire about the space. We were assured that it was green space and would remain so. Since then, a few proposals, including a town pool and a training, a fire training facility, have been put forth over the years that have been rejected. Projects that have gone forward are the telecom facility and Southwest Fire, Southwest Fire Station. Neither of those two projects adds in any substantial way to the traffic congestion borne by Route one seventy-seven in that area of Farmington. Route one seventy-seven in the area of Westwood Drive handles traffic moving between Route four and Route six. And is a major corridor for moving traffic toward major highway access at Route seventy-two. There are many times a day when taking right and left turns out of Pine Hollow Road are difficult and becomes more so. When the golf course is fully operating in their busy season. Adding the sports and entertainment, I should have said recreation facilities in that area of Route one seventy-seven would vastly increase the traffic in that area. And that would be expected by the town, or the town would have no interest in building a facility that few people wanted to visit on a regular basis. Pickleball is receiving a lot of attention and characterized openly in the media as a new fad, even appearing as a selling mechanism in television commercials. There is a large facility opening in Plainville on Northwest Drive, less than three miles from the Farmington Town's proposed location. That will have ten indoor courts and three outdoor courts, open twenty-four hours, seven days a week. They are certainly expecting a lot of interest in participation, cars and traffic, but they are not located right in the middle of a residential area. And will have easy access and traffic exits that don't impact small side streets and home values. Residential properties, both Pine Hollow and Greencrest, as well as Coke Farms, which seems to me partly backs up to the general area. Would be affected by the facility with regard to traffic and possibly as concerns the splash pad also noise. I, as a homeowner and voter in Farmington, and am not in favor of this proposal. I, um, I have to say, I thought that we had a voice here in this hearing. And it seems like it's already been started and people are already planning matches. So, um, I. I guess I was, I misunderstood what this hearing was about. Thank you for your comments. Um, any other? Any other people in the room would like to speak, make public comment?
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, thank you. Um, Shannon, is there anyone online who is interested?
Okay. Uh, if anyone has called in online to offer comment regarding the Town of Farmington application for splash pad and pickleball courts at fourteen Westwood Drive. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there is a, a hand raised.
Okay. I'm sorry, there is or is not?
There is. Uh, Ms. Klein, go ahead. You should be, yep, address the, uh, name and address and address the commission, please.
Yes, hi, hello. Um, this is Arlene Klein. And I live at forty-three Coke Farms Road. I have a few questions. Um, so. I, 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 I was kind of trying to research splash pads and I was listening to what the gentleman had to say that we are not recycling water. So I'm trying to determine, um, how does the water turn off and on? I mean, is it going to just be on constantly from early morning until late at night? Um, uh, you know, it seems like that's a poor use of water if nobody is there. And it does kind of beg the question, if you're not going to recycle water, how much water is this going to use? That's my first question. And the second one is, you know, every once in a while, we do get a drought. And we're asked not to water our lawns. So will the splash pad also be shut down during that time? And I want to know, um, you know, what's the cost involved? Is somebody going to be turning this on in the morning, going there at night? I mean, it sounds like we need an employee that's going to be kind of dedicated to this. What about trash? How does that get picked up on a daily basis? Um, it, so, you know, I, I kind of wonder, you know. Right now, the, the golf course is over there and it's kind of a quiet facility and it's adults and it kind of takes care of itself. But I'm kind of wondering about this splash pad. Uh, in terms also, are people from, um, outside of Farmington going to be able to use this? Is it going to be a cost involved? Is it free, uh, to outside people to come and use this? And in terms of the pickleball, um, I know people who live near a pickleball court in, uh, other areas of the country. And it can be extremely noisy. Uh, and what, what's going to happen if? If people do start complaining about the noise that it can be heard? And also, that's in terms also with the splash pad, because children yelling and shouting and. You know, I, I'm all for kids, but not, you know, on a daily basis, every single day through the entire summer. I think it, it might be a little bit overpowering. So I'm, I'm trying to determine how we are going to handle the noise. Um, I had a couple of other questions. One second, please. Um. Uh. Yeah, I, I know that at one point there was a skating rink over there. And the skating rink, I, I don't know, but the skating rink was taken away. So what happens if this thing is underutilized? What are we going to do then? You know, would we take it out? What, what would you do? What else, what, what other use could it be used for? And because as the woman previously said, there are several pickleball courts going up in the area. And I'm not, I'm also convinced of whether or not we need these pickleball courts. Uh, and then I, I just want to kind of mention something about the process here. Um, I, she mentioned that she got her letter on April second. We got a notification in our mailbox on the third that it was, there was an attempt to deliver it. The following day, which was Thursday, uh, we went over to pick it up at the post office. And that's only because I happened to have a day off. Otherwise, it would not have gotten picked up till Saturday. I understand that you send out these notifications ten days in advance, and I think that's been going on for a long time. But the process of how mail is sorted has changed. All mail goes to Hartford. My envelope was stamped March twenty-eighth in Farmington, and it was stamped April first in Hartford. And then it has to come back out to Farmington. There's no more sorting in the towns anymore. Everything goes to a central distribution place in Hartford, and then it gets resent out. So I believe that you need to kind of look at this ten-day window. Um, getting a letter a couple of days in advance for something this important doesn't seem to be enough time. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is there's a extremely small sign, very small sign. Over on, on, uh, one seventy-seven that says that this public hearing is taking place. The sign isn't even on the property that it belongs on. It's very deceiving. The sign is on the other side of the driveway. On the land where the, that large recreation house is located. And so it's, you know, I, I think we need, the town needs to do a better job and be a little bit more open. In terms of what public hearings are taking place, giving people enough time to, uh, absorb the fact that a public hearing is happening. And also, uh, any signs that you're putting out there need to be very, very visible so people know exactly what, what is a public hearing. All it says is there's a public hearing. It didn't have the date on it and it has a phone number. And again, it's very small. And I don't believe it's in the right place. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, um, Mr. Arnold, can I have you address some of those questions?
I would just want to check to see if anyone else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If anyone else has any other comments and has called in to offer comment on the Town of Farmington application for splash pad and pickleball courts at fourteen Westwood's Drive. Please raise your hand. Using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay. All set. No other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, Mr. Arnold. If you could answer, maybe respond to some of those questions. I know you don't have any purview of the mail or anything like that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't handle the mail and I can't, I, I got nothing to say on that. Um, as far as water usage, um, the usage will be fifty to seventy-five gallons per minute, uh, for the whole park. And that's based, based upon use. Uh, the water does not run twenty-four, seven. It turns on, we can, we can set the times when it is allowed to be turned on. It'll coincide to the hours of operation. Um, it'll be turned on, if it's a cloudy rainy day, we obviously won't turn the water on regardless of the temperature. Um, so I, did I, please help me if I didn't answer that question fully or you need some?
I might clarify. So if you drive up, are the fountains going to be going? Or they are activated when someone approaches or gets in?
They're activated when you press the button. Each individual thing will have a button. And though, as they, as you press the button for, I'm going to call it the green dragon. I don't know, you know, whatever's in there, you'll press the button. That and a couple of other, uh, fountains on the, in the, from the deck will come on. But then it will last for fifteen, twenty, thirty seconds, however long we designate them to last. Um, they are all dictated by design on how long they should last. I, to be perfectly honest, I am not a splash pad designer. We are getting this through the, through our bid process, through a supplier, so. But that's part of the literature that we have. Um, so the water will not be running twenty-four, seven. And as I explained earlier in the presentation, to recycle this water, it, it's too expensive. Um, than treating it at our plant. Um, garbage. There will be garbage receptacles there. There are workers that are at the golf course that maintain our golf course. They are going to pick up the garbage, uh, as part of their garbage run on the course itself. And at the, um, club, the clubhouse has garbage as well, so it just, it's adding two more cans. Uh, it's not going to be that big of a burden for our guys to take care of that. Um, should the splash pad fail and that become the scene that we, everyone thinks it is and it goes away? We can turn it into some, something else could be used for it. Um, whatever vision that is at that time. That can all be talked about and discussed and go from there. I, I have no answer for that. Um, everything will have a fence around it. So it's not like kids will be running from the parking lot and can get, just jump into splash pad. I forgot to say that earlier. I apologize. That was that one. Uh, the sign location, it's all one contiguous property. Um, I don't think there was any mal-intent by the sign going up on that side of the driveway. It was probably intent to just show that instead of being in the firehouse, it was, excuse me, by the, uh, stone house. Not in the open field, but it is all one contiguous property from Plainville Avenue to the Bristol Town Line. To the Coke Farm, to Brookshire and everything to the east. I know there was something else and I couldn't write.
Conditions easily turned off, right?
Yeah, so like I say, if there's a drought, we obviously won't turn the pad on, turn the splash pad on. We'll put a sign up that is closed until further notice. Um, we will abide, abide by all rules that the Connecticut Water Company puts on. It is not something I take lightly. We spend a lot of money on water in town, as a town. Um, I sit on the Connecticut Water Company Advisory Council. So we're constantly looking at ways to reduce and. You got to outweigh up the whole program. The splash pad, as you said, lives on the board for ten or twelve years. Uh, back then, we didn't, a lot of it pushed was for recycled water and. Things have come, come a long ways with the actual units themselves. And we're here tonight to go forward. Um, and it is voted on during the capital budget, um, through the budget process, the month of funding. Uh, I want to thank Shannon for her plan review, her agenda review. It's very concise and factual to the point. Uh, you will notice in there that she said that we have a forty-five percent grant, fifty-five percent town funding. Um, I think that, did I find, missed something on the question?
Traffic. Do you want to touch on traffic?
Sure. Um, we've, we looked at it. I talked with the state traffic engineer, who was a former employee. We discussed this a little bit. Um, and based on, yeah, it may have an increase in traffic. Uh, it will, if you get that, if it, the, the demand becomes that high. Uh, being that it is Plainville Avenue, it can handle a lot of traffic, which it currently does today. I, at this point, there's no, no significant increase that we think it would be detrimental to the side street or Westwood's Drive.
I think Ms., uh, Ms. Klein had a, um, also question on out, out, um, outs- residents outside of town versus, uh.
That whole, that concept, correct. Um, at this point, it's free because we have a state grant. We would, it's hard to limit who can and cannot use. As I said, I go over to Bristol, I go to West Hartford. It's very difficult to monitor. You would have to have a employee there asking for IDs and checking. Uh, that puts a big burden on everybody and plus it adds an additional cost. Um, but it's basically of, you know, be nice in the sandbox. You know, uh, it's not, it will be free and that's what the anticipation is at this point. If costs rank, you know, you know, get extremely high, we'll have to reevaluate it and take a look at and say, maybe we have to charge some money for entrance. Or sell a pass or a season pass or things like that. But at this point, it's free.
And there's no, um, there's no, um, uh, like limit as to how many people can be, um, on the premises at, at one time? Or are you?
Specifically to splash pad?
No, for the whole facility.
So it governs itself, like the splash pad, you can, it's only, only handle, uh, probably about twenty-five to thirty kids at a time. Uh, the pickleball court is going to be dependent about how many people are there. We'll have some benches for people to wait. Uh, I've seen people bring their folding chairs, you know, the, uh, camp chairs or whatever. They'll come and sit and they bring a cooler with them and they have drinks. Um, sandwiches and snacks and stuff and wait. Um, but it's really, with the eight courts, you're looking at thirty-two people playing at once. Uh, the most I've seen on a Saturday afternoon in Bristol is about forty-five people there. But it's constantly moving, so it's not like it's a big hangout. You go with your group, you kind of hang, hang out with your group. You stay with your group and then you move on to the court and go. So it really is, and if you pull in and you see it, people pull in and, oof, too many people, I'm not going to go today. So that's kind of how it governs itself.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's another hand raised.
Okay.
Comment.
Please.
Yep. Um. LB, you should be able to turn your microphone up and please, full name and address.
Hi, Lisa Troy, uh, Talltimbers Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
So I just have a question about how this particular location was chosen. Um, and why not, for example, the Tungstus Mead area where there are existing tennis courts? It seemed like pickleball courts would kind of complement that area. As well as the splash pad where you have a playground and kind of an existing, um, you know, swing sets and things like that. So what, why not that area as opposed to where these are going now?
Yes, please.
Good. Uh, we've looked at Tungstus Mead for a number of years. And based on the use that it gets for the soccer seasons, to add this to it, we felt would be just too much activity going on. And you would have to take away, the, the wetlands are there, uh, too big of an impact on the environment go, surrounding it. Everything that's left is truly wetlands. And to take away parking would be detrimental for Tungstus Mead.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I'll check one more time. If anyone else has called in regarding the Town of Farmington application for splash pad and pickleball courts at fourteen Westwood's Drive. Please raise your hand. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, do we have more questions? Anything that's come up, Matt?
Nope, all good.
Okay, Bob?
Russ, just one clarification on the splash pad. Um, because I'm envisioning it and I may be wrong.
Because I'm envisioning it and I may be wrong. So the, the water, it's going to be like those showers at the beach, right? Where you push the button, it turns on for thirty, forty seconds, whatever, and then it turns off when nobody's there.
Yes, sir.
But it's per. Per device, not the whole park.
No, no, exactly. Could you, could you scroll down, Shannon?
Of course.
Thank you. Yeah.
Gotta move some stuff around. I can center it. Hang on, fellas. There you go.
That's what I was picturing. It's like the, when you wash your feet off coming out of the beach.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. We'll have one central controller to turn it on and activate the whole splash pad park. And in each device, you walk up and press it. You'll press, there's a button on each device. And you'll see in between there, the ones coming up from the deck, those will be activated when you press another button. So those are not just running, as soon as we say on, it's not like the water just starts running. It's only activated with a push button.
Bruce, any questions?
No questions.
Scott, did you have any other further questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kyla has called in. It doesn't, Madam Chair, I don't know if she's heard enough to have any question.
Okay.
Yes, I came in late. I don't. Is it appropriate for me to make comment rather than question at this time?
Now, if you have a question that you need clarified for something, then certainly, but I guess if you haven't heard the whole presentation, then probably not, but comment.
Yeah, I just frequent like the Bristol and the West Hartford locations, so I go outside of Farmington for similar events and are and I do notice that the, I guess the the parents do tend to, like if there's a lot of people there, they do tend to, you know, regulate whether their kids are going on to a course like this or not. So I, I just, from the comments I had heard, I just thought I'd add that into the discussion.
Okay, thank you. My comments are just, I'm, are my questions, or I appreciate your clarification about the water usage and the fact that it isn't a fountain constantly running, that it is a per, on-demand usage. Okay, and I think that's all our questions. Last call. Okay, then I am going to close the public hearing as of now. Okay, and Commissioners, any discussions, any points, anything you anyone? Okay.
I'm ready to vote.
Do we think we, that was going to be my next question? We feel we're ready to vote.
I'm going to politely remind to include the waivers, please.
Okay. Okay, yes. So I need to have a motion to regarding this application for a special permit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for special permit by the Town of Farmington for special permit and site plan approval to install splash pad, pickleball courts, and accessory buildings to house equipment. Restrooms for the splash pad and pickleball courts at fourteen West Woods Drive are forty zone and include the two waivers as presented.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Okay, and all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposition? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Our next public hearing concerns an application for expansion of a home in Ridgeline. Mr. Kemper, please come on up.
Good evening, Jack Kemper, Kemper Associates Architects in Farmington. You remember me from last meeting's Ridgeline application. This one is much simpler, much smaller. So in fact, just a little history of it, I didn't realize this was a ridgeline, so that was on me till very late in the process. It didn't change anything, but we're here to get approval. The house at sixteen White Oak Road is, right, is, is a pretty low slung cape. I think the ridge right now measures about fifteen, sixteen feet. So we're looking to raise, we're, we're going to turn the existing garage into living space. We're going to raise the roof of the existing garage by six feet. And then we're going to build a new garage in front of it. And then we're going to raise the roof of the house to get a porch and so it's not the tail wagging the dog. So the house stays at least as important as the garage. We are also adding a bedroom on the, on the right side of that. That's, all our additions are in front of the house, so we're not doing anything in the backyard. Where there's a pool there, there's a nice view, but it's not sort of like, you know, the, like the one last week where it drops off. If, if Shannon, you want to take a look at the site plan or, oh, the floor plan, we should, yeah.
I don't know, which, which one do you want?
The site plan is good. That's the one with, that I marked up in red. That's the as-built, that's showing in red where we're adding on to the house. So you see, we're doing nothing behind the house. And we're kind of keeping the character of the house. It's not becoming a big monster or anything. It's just becoming better at what it is. If we want to go to the the pictures probably, right? Yeah, that's the house as it exists now. So I just wanted to sort of say it's a very low slung house, a very nice house. It angles around built in, I think, the mid-fifties, early sixties. Then we want to go down to let's see.
If I can get that to Zoom.
That's a picture of the ocean, it looks like.
It does look like that, doesn't it?
We can't see the ocean from here.
Not quite that high?
Not, not quite that high. I think that's a picture from the back of the house.
Back showing the line with the new garage and I can't, so these Adobe works different down here than it does.
Oh, yes. You see the yellow line? The yellow line is over the garage. That's where the roof line is ending up over the garage.
May I ask, just a clarification?
Yes.
Is that coincident then, the roof line over this main portion of the home then, that actually extends over? And how far does that extend over?
We're raising, we want the main line of the home is raising up three and a half feet, just to get it marginally higher than the garage by six inches or something.
Than the proposed garage elevation?
Yes, and that's, that's shown on the plan.
Right, but it's not shown here on this. So that's what I'm trying to, so that the commission understands when you're looking at this. Because this shows the line over top of the garage, but it doesn't extend over the top.
Oh, yeah.
Technically, it does over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Extend over.
Yes, yes, yes.
As far as the chimney?
Yes.
Just short of the chimney, two feet short of the chimney.
Okay, so there's no change to the chimney?
No.
So that whole, that whole section is coming.
Yes. And the ridge is actually moving farther away, if you see the plan too. So, so it's, it's.
The ridge of the house.
The ridge of the house. We're leaving the back of the house. I want to make this clear. The, if we want to go to the plans, maybe better to, to do that, the section in the plans. But the back of the, the main house, the, the, it's staying the same. We're raising it at the front. So the ridge is higher, but it's also farther away.
So this I'm not sure which plan you want, Jack.
The, the section.
Well, there's.
Yeah, you got it. So that's showing, the drawing in the middle to the, is the section through the main house. And the back wall is where it is now. And, and what, what, what we're saying is it's going up, but it's going up further.
So towards the front of the house.
Toward the front of the house.
This is the rear, so.
Yes.
Plan left is the rear of the home.
Yes.
The ridge is extending up. It'll be higher, but it is towards the front, plan right.
Right.
The existing peak, so the.
Yes, the section is actually through the living room. Yeah, yeah. So what we're adding, what's colored in is what's there. And what we're adding is light to the, to the right, to the right of it. That's what we're adding. So although it's going up, it's going farther away. I thought this was simple, sorry. Want to look at the let's see, we should look at the elevation again because the, the, the dimensions are on the elevation that. Yeah. Oh, the one with the site section. We should do, look at the one with the site section. We put the elevation, the dimensions on that.
The site, so the one, the, the large cross section?
Yeah, yeah, the site section. It's at the top of that page.
I think it's this one. That's not this one?
Yeah. Yeah, so the main, yes, so if you go to the elevation at the top of it, and I have it here too, please. I did bring, the, the main roof is three foot six higher than it exists now. Then the garage roof is six foot higher. Six foot six and three foot six. So, so the garage roof is starting from lower, but is ending up lower than the main roof. Is that understandable? Good, thank you. You want to look at the, we should look at the site section too, because one of the things that we did is we put the line up and did a board up, sort of like we did last week and saw nothing from Town Farm Road. So what we did is the drawing in the middle of the page is the staff was nice enough to send me all the assessors' maps for the whole town. We were able to construct a section from Town Farm Road to the house. So that is to scale in that section. Unfortunately, I think that picture is in the, in where the house is.
I've slowed it down. I can't get it to move on the screen. I don't know why it's not moving on the screen.
Well, I guess the point is, if you look at the line of vision from Town Farm Road, you would have to like dig a tunnel to see the house because there's hills in front of the house. And that's really what we wanted to portray because we, we knew you couldn't see it from there. So if you see that straight line from Town Farm Road, you just can't see it.
Mountain Lane is in between.
Yeah.
The peak or Mountain Lane in between.
Yeah. And then, and that, that map shows where we drew the section line. And then we have the pictures of the site, the aerial view.
Just going to take a bit.
Yeah, no problem.
This one, right, taken from Town.
Yeah, that was taken from Town Farm Road and we just couldn't see anything, so.
And then this shows the line of sight.
Right.
Farm Road. And you can see this is mountain, this is Mountain Lane.
Yeah.
Here. Shown on the screen.
And then one lower, I think we did the aerial that shows that we are taking, I think, four trees out in front of the house that we wanted to, to show.
And it is just for, I had different documentation. One, one plan showed six and one plan shows four.
I think it's, it's the four. It's the aerial view is the more correct. We did the first one on the old survey. So this is the correct one. So you see the, the red is where we're adding and the four trees are the ones that come down. You see there's trees between them and, and the ridge anyway. And I think that's, we're available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Matt, you have any questions?
So it looks like you're not encroaching any further on the ridgeline.
Correct, correct. Everything's in front of the house.
And the trees being removed are on the west, is that the western side of?
The eastern side. East, south, southern, southeast.
It's the south side, so this is the plan, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The as-built and the trees are all to the left of the proposed garage.
Okay, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bobby?
So and I'm sure you took into account or you're going to have to, but I'm, I'm having a hard time with not, not the end of the world, but I'm having a hard time seeing how the chimney is not going to be affected. You say that because of the.
The chimney may be, the chimney will be raised, I think. It has to be ten, it has to be two feet above ten.
And that's why I was.
Yes, yes. No, it is actually shown on the plan raised, so you're correct, sorry.
All right, then that's all I have.
Okay.
No questions for me, thank you.
Bruce?
First of all, my compliments on the elevations, it looks beautiful design. But you're going from three bedrooms to five?
Yes.
And when I looked at the plan, the septic still looks like it's three bed.
We've been in contact with Farmington Health District and they've looked at it. They'll have to look at it again to, to do it.
So if you need to, you know, dig in and change, I don't think you have room for more leach fields or, or, or bigger work there. What, what happens if it's, if it's an issue?
Well, they told us it wasn't an issue, but yes.
Now, if you're gonna, if you're gonna make comment, then you need to come to the microphone, so it's captured on the recording, please.
Yes, come on up and join us.
Hi, I'm Mike, I'm Mike Sweeney and be the contractor on the job. And Diane from Farmington Valley Health District, that was one of my first questions, was the septic system going to be adequate? And she approved it verbally, you know, for that. I hope that answered your question.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Scott, how about you? Do you have any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, Kyla, any questions for you?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think my questions have been answered. Did you do a formal balloon test?
We did, we put a piece of wood and painted it up there because we, you know, it was only six feet. It was only six feet. It wasn't in middle space. We still couldn't see it.
Okay. It, it looks, yes, like the trees are mature around it and things like that. Okay, I think that is my questions. Now it's time for the public. Anyone in the room have comments? Public, this is public comment, so here's your opportunity. If so, please come on up to the podium. Okay, Shannon, can you ask online?
If anyone has called in online to offer comment on the sixteen White Oak Road application for home expansion in the ridgeline, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. And if anyone has called in to offer comment on sixteen White Oak Road for the permit for expansion of home in the ridgeline, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions, anything that's come up you thought of? Here's your opportunity. Okay, online, Scott or Kyla? You good? Okay.
Nothing.
Okay. Did you have something, Bobby?
No, we can go into it after we close.
Okay, since there's no more questions or comments, then I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, any questions or, excuse me, any discussion? Do we know what we're voting on? Do we have any thoughts, anything we need to add? What were you going to say, Bobby?
The only thing I'd like to have is clarification from Health District. Verbal is one thing, but to have it on paper, so I'd like to have that on paper before it gets approved.
Okay.
She gave her the, she gave her the verbal, okay, but no, I'm not just saying.
Yeah.
We're going from a three-bedroom to a five-bedroom. If she says, I misunderstood.
Okay.
It doesn't, so it won't get through the building permit.
Okay.
Without Health District. So Health District has a formal sign-off on all building permits, particularly when there's a septic system or a well.
Okay.
So it'll have a formal sign-off as part of the building permit review process. So it'll have a formal sign off as part of the building permit review process.
Perfect, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do we know what we're voting on? Everyone feels comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion for the Jack Kemper application for special permit for expansion of the home in Ridge Line Protection Area, 16 White Oak Road. Uh, R80 zone for approval.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any, up, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, now, um, before we move, open our next one, um, Scott, you had mentioned you need to recuse yourself?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So Kyla, that means you will be voting, uh, member on this, um, issue. You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we'll let you know when you can come back, Scott. Okay, so the next, uh, application up is Jennifer Villa. Please come on up and state your name and make your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Villa. I'm a 25-year resident of Farmington. I live and work at Heinz Farm, 303 Meadow Road in Farmington. I bought the farm from Dave and Martha Heinz in 2020 and have since been growing as a farm and garden center with organically grown produce, flowers and plants. Heinz Farm is a very unique and beautiful property in Farmington, and I feel incredibly fortunate to be able to farm on this land. I love what I do. I am very dedicated and a responsible steward of this land. My farm and all farms in town are important assets to Farmington, and they add value to the quality of life in this town. I really enjoy sharing my farm with the community. The special permit I am here for tonight is a Music on the Farm Summer Event Series. Um, this event would involve three summer Friday evenings with local folk and Americana musicians and a food and beverage truck. The events would be approximately from 5:30 to 9:00 PM with music ending around 8:30, which would allow, um, ample time with the summer light for attendees to exit. The farm staff would direct parking as they have with past events. The music series would be free to attend and accessible to everyone. This event is agriculturally linked. The farm stand and the cut-your-own flower garden would be open during the event. The vegetables would be growing in the fields. The chickens will be dancing in their coop. And my staff and I will be there to answer any questions about the farm and interact with attendees. Agriculture, like nearly all industries, is changing and growing with the times. Agritourism is a relatively new term that describes tourism that is related to agriculture. With expenses dramatically rising across the board from seed to fertilizer to labor and more, it is increasingly difficult for small farms to survive on produce sales alone. Agritourism events draw the community to the farm to experience it, enjoy it, and learn more about their connection to their local food and flowers. The farm experience is what agritourism is all about. Um, with the application, I submitted a few articles, um, that support the growing agritourism trend. Um, I'd just like to highlight, um, a quote from one of the articles that kind of sums it all up. Um, in March of 2023, the Hartford Business Journal published an article titled "Small Connecticut Farms Diversify with Agritourism to Survive." In that article, Joan Nichols, the Executive Director of the Connecticut Farm Bureau states, "Towns are continually working on zoning to support agritourism, which benefits farms and educates the public on the agricultural industry's important role. Farming is hard. The key is diversification, and if it's done right, it works for everyone." That is a very true statement and kind of sums up the whole agritourism trend to me, but, um, people that attend my events get to know the farm better and return with their family other times during the year. The event, like the music series, are critical to the survival of the farm. I hear over and over again from my neighbors, my customers and town residents how happy they are that this land has remained a farm and how much they enjoy my farm and the events. I love sharing the farm with the community. Included with the application are many letters of support from butters, neighbors and longtime Farmington residents. My past events have all been well organized and well run without problems and complaints. I take great pride in the quality of everything I do at the farm, including the community events. I sincerely hope you will grant this special permit, and if you haven't already, please come enjoy the farm with your families. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, Commissioners, let's start with any questions. Matt?
So this is a pretty dense residential area. What can you tell me about the noise and kind of noise system you'll be using, how loud it's expected to be?
Um, the noise is, first of all, within the town ordinances for noise. The, the music would end by 8:30. With, I have somebody that handles, um, the music for me and sets up the speakers and I asked him about the decibel levels and he said it's very hard to determine because I don't know, I got technical with the speakers and said it's hard to give an exact decibel level. Um, but, you know, it's certainly is no louder than, um, you know, somebody running a loud lawnmower or weed whacker um, or big trucks going down Route 6 or anything like that. So it's not extremely loud and it's not heavy music. It's folk and Americana.
Uh, what about lighting?
Um.
These are going to go into the evening, I assume.
Well, it's summer, so it stays light out till, you know, between 8:30 and 9 o'clock and the music would be over by 8:30. So there's enough light to get to the cars.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Bobby?
Welcome. Good presentation. Um, I can completely understand the struggling farm, uh, situation you're in. When everybody's in, because it seems like farms are becoming few and far between. Um, and I am a big proponent of keeping farm in Farmington. So if what you have to do is kind of think outside the box sometimes, I am a strong proponent of that. That being said, so you're planning on three events?
This would be a summer music series. So this is three Friday evenings. I, I've had some other events that were permitted through the town special, uh, not special permit, but regular event permit process. So I have, you know, had a summer farm festival and a fall farm festival and a couple of other things, um, over the past few years.
Okay, um, but never like a concert series, if you will?
Not a series. I do have an annual, um, concert called Chicken Stock. That's a, a benefit for the Connecticut Farmland Trust, which is a one-day thing with musicians and, uh, food trucks and.
Roughly, how many people do you have attending that?
That, we had about, uh, 500 this past year.
Wow.
This I don't expect to be, that, that's our only ticketed event. The other events I have are all free.
And did you have any situations that arose with the chicken, chicken bluza or whatever?
It's just the weather. It just rained.
It was in the.
Yeah.
Um, so there was no traffic situations, anything like?
No, uh, this event series and Chicken Stock and the other events, it's not like everybody comes all at one time. They kind of stagger in and stagger out and um, I have event staff kind of managing and directing the parking and we have a specific area for parking.
Okay, um, the musicians are local?
Yep.
Okay, um. And you said you had a music guy set up and he's going to be controlling decibel levels and noise and all that stuff?
Yeah, his name's Tracy Walton. He manages a music studio.
Um, back to the musicians. Is it like a one-man band? Is it a full five-piece band? What?
Uh, each night, to be honest, for this particular event series, I haven't lined up the specific acts. He, uh, he kind of screens and, and lines up the acts, but you know, generally folk music, Americana, um, it's not, you know, I wouldn't say no, not a five-piece band, more mellow.
More mellow, okay, cool. Um, and then the cost of the event? Are you, is this going to be free?
This is a free event too.
Okay. And then you said you're going to have food and trucks there, uh, food and beverage trucks?
One food truck, one beverage.
Food truck, beverage truck. They're going to take care of their own permits and all that good stuff, you know?
Right, they, yeah, the health department has to sign off on them.
Okay, all right. Like I said, um, you know, if this is going to help keep the farm in Farmington, let's see what we can do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Roshi?
Thank you, Ms. Villa, for being here and, uh, for your presentation. I appreciate it. I, uh, am an avid sports woman and I know the importance of land and the connection of, uh, man with the land. And, uh, what I see nowadays is very concerning. When you ask children when their food comes from, they don't know where the food come from and they tell you they come from the store, or the food comes from the stores and, uh, and so, uh, I, I admire you as a, um, as a woman farmer. You're, you're an inspiration to many, including myself. Um, so with that, I have a few questions, uh, for you. Um, so you, uh, from, from the website, I've, I've noticed that you already, um, offer the land for private events. Uh, am I correct for?
On my website, I do have, I've never hosted a private event, but, um, like Subhedge Farm has weddings, so I'm open to it and I would, you know, follow an event permitting process, process if somebody was interested in that.
I see. So this is, this music, uh, fest is going to be your first experience, um, with a, with an outdoors music?
No, I've had, I've had other events. Um, I just haven't had weddings. Yeah, I haven't had weddings or corporate events or it's on the website that, you know, ask about having a wedding here, but we haven't ever posted.
I see, I see, okay, I understand. And, um, and you said only three Fridays, so we have about 52 Friday, Fridays per year and.
This is summer Fridays. It's July 12th, July 26th and August 9th.
Only three, so it seems like very, uh, you know, only three and it's not a lot of Fridays and, uh, yeah, for a few hours. Can you please also explain to us the par, parking situation? Uh, there were some, some, uh, letters, uh, uh, from opposition that were concerned about, you know, um, the cars that would park on the, I don't know if it's, they're going to park on the farm, but then, uh, you know, some neighbors, I guess, had concerns with, um, the cars leaking and contaminating the soil. Could you please address?
Yeah, one of the opposition letters cited that the cars, they were concerned about the cars parking on a winding road. The cars have never parked on the road. Um, there's one small area on the farm, um, on the high end, it's less than probably about three quarters of an acre where we regularly will park cars if we have an event. Um, because it's the highest ground and it's easy to get to. We also park cars, um, on, in front of the farm, um, which is privately owned property. So the, there's one parking area on the town leased land and there's one, um, on privately owned land.
And you're planning on, from your letter, uh, that you submitted to the, to the town, you said you're going to use about 20% of the state land and 80% of your private land for this event? Am I correct?
Uh, most of it take, well, a good amount takes place on the private land and then out of the leased land, it's not 20%, it's less than 20%. It's a, it's a, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's a, a small area of the land I, I lease. Most of the land I lease is either resting or actively being farmed.
Mm-hmm. And you said you will, you will, you will actively during those times, uh, that this music fest is, is going on. Uh, you also provide services to people, uh, with your gardening and, and answering questions about farms and, and.
We always have the event well-staffed, so, um, you know, myself and my experienced staff will be around and people, you know, like to see the farm and ask questions about what we're growing. Um, since I bought the farm, I turned basically a huge junk pile on town land into a cut-your-own flower garden and people really enjoy that and, um, it's, uh, normally only open mornings because that's when flowers are cut best, but evenings are good too. Um, and the farm's not typically open in the evening, so this gives some people the opportunity to, to enjoy that, um, in the evening. Um, and then my farm stand with produce and everything else will be.
Thanks. I'm stressing on this because your lease states that, um, your activities must be, um, within the confines of farming. So if you keep these activities, uh, you know, giving people information about farming and.
Oh, there will definitely be activities related to farming during the event.
Thanks. Um, I have no further questions. Um, if your application is approved, I'll be one of those, uh, attendees.
Good, thanks.
Friday nights.
Thank you. Okay, Bruce?
Cool. I, I echo my fellow Commissioner sentiments and, you know, the challenges you face in the agribusiness and the things you need to do to, to be creative, but I'm also mindful of, uh, some of the information that has been in the, uh, opposition letters and most of that is related to, um, sound and noise levels. And we've already had a, a couple of questions and, uh, related to that. Um, and I know when you were making your presentation, you, you talked about, you know, it's hard to measure. I don't think it is that hard to measure and, and would you be amenable if, you know, if we did grant you approval to have, have it contingent on some decibel measurements being made so we can, we can track that uh, for the future? I, I mean, I know there's an application even on the iPhone, uh, to, to look at that and I saw that you were, you know, making a statement that you're going to turn the speakers in and away from the neighbors, but if I read the letters, Halloween, I think, was, uh, the event that, you know, there was, uh, really loud for people in their homes and, what's it called? Chicken stock? Uh, they, they had that, had that as well. And so, you know, looking to try and find some, uh, some balance there to understand that. So the, uh, the, the actual question is, is would you be amenable to that?
I'm fine with that. Um, two out of the three oppositional letters, um, their backyards are about a half a mile away from where the speakers would be through State Forest. Um, I highly doubt the sound is louder than their neighbor running a lawnmower at that time. Um.
Best thing would be to prove it.
Right.
That's really.
And their, their backyards are closer to Route 6 than they are to where the farm is, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Kyla, do you have any questions?
Oh, I agree with the sentiment of, you know, proving you know, the decibel level. But I do think if we're to, if that is something we end up moving forward with, you know, to, to place it adequately, like along that, uh, boundary line and not, you know, close to the speaker, like, you know, where somebody is at the event saying, hey, I measured this and, and this is the decibel level I got. So just making sure that, that boundary line is, is actually, you know, near where the neighbor's concern is rather than, um, you know, something arbitrary coming in. But you, the, again, if this is approved, this would be something I would be happy to attend and, and I think it's a, a, a good effort, you know, on your part to bring this to, to the community, but also acknowledging, you know, the concerns that people did have. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, love this idea. It's a great idea. Again, echoing, supporting the thinking outside the box and the creativity. But you are in a dense neighborhood, so we do need to listen to all the voices that are out there. Um, my question is, uh, when you say folk Americana, so it's a family friendly.
Family friendly.
So come bring your picnic or grab a, grab a burger.
Buy from the food trucks is there, but yeah.
I should say, amend that, but.
But yeah, come enjoy with the family. There'll be cornhole boards set up on the lawn for, you know, families to play with.
Space to.
There's picnic tables, you know.
Run around if they don't want to sit or, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's a great idea. I am very supportive of community building events, so. Okay, uh, now let's ask for any comment from people in the room. Please come on up, state your name and address and we'd love to hear you.
My name is Betsy Kaplan and I live on Carriage Drive, which is right across the street from Jen's farm. Um, I've lived, first of all, I can't say much more than what Jen said, which was a terrific presentation, I think. Um, but I think, I, I guess I want everyone to know that the overarching purpose of the farm is as a farm. Um, Jen does live by the lease. Um, and I know that there has been opposition. I have heard from some of the opposition because I know some of the people who are opposing this. Um, and I have received emails from them. I can tell you that there's no charge. Jen never charges other than for chicken stock um, for access to the farm. I freely walk on her land, on the leased land. I work, there's a little gate that you can go through and there's never a problem. I see other people walking dogs on the farm. Um, her staff even gives a neighbor that I have, uh, that lives near me, a dog biscuit. And we know who that is, um, when she brings her dog to the farm for free. She gets the dog biscuit. Um, so in regards to the complaints about the music, yes, there is music, but I live on, on Carriage Drive, as I said. I've been there for thirty-three years. Um, and I'm directly across from the farm and, and quite a bit closer than people that live on Center Brook and Cornerstone in those neighborhoods. I respect that they might be hearing some music. The whole community hears a little bit of music those, that night with chicken stock. It's not a problem. I can hear it on my road. It doesn't sound, um, again, I understand what you're saying about decibels and I think that would be a wonderful thing as well to just validate it and understand what's happening. But if you were there and heard it in the neighborhood, it's quite diffuse and it's not quite as loud as what you may be uh, getting the impression from in some of the letters. That's, I realize a subjective opinion as well. But as I said, um, I love that farm. I've been, been going there when Dave and Martha, um, Heine um, used to talk to Dave all the time, buy vegetables and, and other things from Dave and Martha. Um, they're terrific people. Um, you know, just wonderful people, actually. Even when Barbara and Ernie Heine, we're going way back now, we're still alive. Uh, they often welcomed neighbors to the farm. So Jen is very much in the tradition of the Hines and the family uh, that's lived there for all these years. They used to have a big Halloween event and all the kids in the neighborhood would get on, for a big hayride around, you know, the farm and, and they did all these kinds of things. And so Jen is doing the same thing. And um, she's continuing in that generous spirit. But she's bringing the enhancements that are keeping farms alive in this twenty-first century, as you've all acknowledged. And it's really, if you go over there any afternoon, it's really beautiful. She's got a lot of things there. She's renovated it. There's renovated the barn, so she's got local craftsmen, Christmas trees, pumpkins, vegetables, food from local farms and independent artisans all throughout Connecticut. So she's not only increasing access to the community, but she's reintrodu- she's introducing farmers from all over, local farmers from all over. Um, again, very much um, a community event. Uh, for her events, there's lots of families there, lots of kids. The chickens are running around. It's a fun event. Um, so I don't really have anything more to say other than uh, you know, she doesn't do anything. The purpose is the same that it's been for generations. And they celebrate and, and celebrate and support local farms, open green space, while at the same time bringing people together. So I hope you consider that. It's, it's really a lovely place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments in the room? Okay. Shannon, anyone online?
Okay, if anyone has called in to offer comment on the application for Jen Villa for three oh three Meadow Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. There is one hand raised. Like and says, Google Pixel seven pro, so you should be able to unmute your microphone. We'll need your name and address, please.
This is Christopher St. James from eleven Brightwood Road in Unionville, Connecticut, calling in, in uh, emphatic support of Jen Villa's application. Um, I have attended uh, both chicken stock events proudly, uh, and Jen is absolutely correct. Weather was the only real uh, problem with the last one. It was an absolute deluge. But uh, Jen and her staff handled the situation quite well and it was um, rather torrential. I know Jen remembers that very well. Um, but I just wanted to echo uh, the sentiments that were just expressed uh, by the speaker that lives locally. I think it's an absolute um, win for the community. I think by fusing together uh, the power of local music, which in and of itself, even if it is not your particular uh, favorite flavor of music, for example. Um, I think live music is something to behold and to appreciate regardless of its form. Um, and I think the community appreciates that and to, to put together uh, two very, very important um, sustaining um, important fact, facts of life, which are enjoyment of life and food to sustain life. Um, I think is a win for the community. I think it goes a long way towards um, um, uh, protecting uh, the rural nature of our town. And quite frankly, uh, Jen, you're doing a fantastic job at a property that my family has had connection to for some years as well. Both of my children worked for Martha and Dave. Um, we've been buying vegetables there for many, many years and I am thrilled uh, that Jen is carrying on that fine tradition and I emphatically support this application. Um, I think noise measurement aside, um, it is not a blaring wall of sound by any means. Um, and I think that uh, the neighbors, all things considered, uh, with all things um, equal benefit by having um, proper attention brought towards an absolute asset for not just our local community, but um, to support local agriculture. And so I commend Jen for these events and I wholeheartedly support her application and uh, implore uh, the committee to approve it as such. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Okay, if anyone else has called to offer comment, called in to offer comment regarding the application for Jennifer Villa for three oh three and eight four eight seven Meadow Road for music on the farm, summer series, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised, but we do have quite a few written correspondence to get into the record.
Correct.
I just, I'm gonna try to open them up all and then I will. We've got them in batches. Okay. Uh, we received a uh, written correspondence on April first. It is anonymous. Uh, it has been posted to the website. It is in opposition. Says the, uh, appreciate that the area of three oh three Meadow Road, Heine Farm is continuing to be utilized as a farm center. However, the prior farm music events held at this location with the added traffic and noise prove to be a disruption to the ability of my family to enjoy our outdoor space in our residential neighborhood. Again, it's anonymous, no name or address provided. Uh, and I think that was it. And that, yeah, that was the only one received there. Next is an email from Jan Carpenter in support of the application. Uh, again, this has been posted to the website and shared with the commission and the applicant in advance. Uh, Jan Carpenter nine two, sorry, two ninety-two Meadow Road. So in a butter of, or a neighbor of the property.
She's in the butter.
Thank you. Uh, April second letter, the uh, I'm not sure, Don, Don Lynn and Lui, uh, residents, uh, and adjacent, they're at three eighteen Meadow Road in support of the application in the summer music farm series. Again, all this correspondence has been posted to the website, shared with the commission in advance and shared with the applicant in advance. April second, Maria Sumo, Suma, uh, twenty-two year resident, frequent customer, writing in support of the application for special permit for summer music series. Uh, nineteen Indian Hill Road. Margaret Heiner at twenty-nine Mountain Spring Road. A ten-year resident and customer and supporter of the application, uh, put forth this evening. Mary Louise Wadsworth, no address given, a longtime resident of Farmington and writing in support of the application this evening. Ted and Becky Jones, fifty-five Wolf Pit Road. Longtime seventy-five year resident of Farmington and writing in support of Jen Villa and the special permit application this evening. Not sure, Tom, Thompson?
Lee Thompson.
Excuse me?
Lee Thompson, Leontine, yeah.
Lee Thompson, uh, one twenty-two Town Farm Road. Uh, resident in support of the, of Jen Villa and the special permit application this evening. Emily Colini, thirty High Street. Twelve year resident and writing in support of the uh, application this evening for the summer concert series. Lisa Johnston, uh, third year working uh, at the farm and is working as event promoter and obviously is writing in support of the application this evening. Next set of uh, letters that came in, we've got James Marino from fifty Carriage Drive. Writing in support of the application this evening. Margaret Heiner, I think we just did that one, twenty-nine Mountain Spring Road, written in support. Jane Marino, fifty Carriage Drive. Uh, writing in support of Jen Villa and the special permit application this evening. Got Rudy and Ellen D'Angelo, three oh six Meadow Road. Written letter in support of the application this evening. Scott Loveland, uh, address is not provided. Uh, he has provided written opposition to the application this evening citing concerns with noise and traffic. Uh, this is Teresa Genizuski, uh, thirty-one Center Brook Drive. Writing in opposition of the application um, and citing concern with use of the property for events. Uh, the final, uh, this, and this sequence is um, from Mr. Ron Genesco on, I believe, Center Brook Drive as well. I don't know if you provide, yes, forty-four Center Brook Drive. Uh, detailed letter citing concerns with the use, um, providing events at the property as part of the farm. Um, multiple page letter was shared, again, was shared with the commission and the applicant and posted to the website. It is captured in the recording as part of the public hearing. And then Mr. Genesco provided uh, a number of attached documents, including the lease. And other documents, uh, town ordinance one forty-eight. A uh, map from our GIS uh, depicting wetlands. And additional maps from the GIS. More mapping from the GIS. And the uh, Article four, section twelve of the zoning regulations. And then it would seem uh, clips from the uh, farm truck at Heine Farm website. With uh, some comments on it. Right, so that takes care of that. And the final, uh, no, I've got two more, sorry. Um, this was, came in late, um, Mr. St. James already offered verbal testimony, but this came in around six o'clock. It's my email. So that had not been shared with the commission. Um, but again, I'm not going to read it in since Mr. James, uh, St. James called in. And then I was handed a piece of correspondence uh, this evening. It's from Catherine Wadsworth, forty Meadow Lane, Farmington, Connecticut. I'm writing in support of Jennifer Villa's special permit application to allow for three Friday evenings this summer uh, in July, two in July, one in August for music events on her farm property on Meadow Road. Since Jennifer started her business, she's been very generous with her time, talent and products to help many organizations in Farmington to be successful with their events. She has held events periodically during weekends and holidays over these past years at the farm that have brought in music and fun for the public. Though these proposed events will extend into the evening somewhat, they will still be ending well before and in a reasonable time for such gathering. I am, I'm a neighbor just down the road, someone who loves to shop at Heine Farm for anything local from eggs to vegetables, plants, shrubs or trees. Her business and how she presents it all is a unique asset to our community. I know I'm not alone in this feeling as there are many, there are always many customers enjoying the place, walking through the gardens and browsing around the shops in the barn. I hope that you will consider her application favorably so we can continue to support all Jennifer's efforts for the farm she runs so well with a great staff she has around her. Thank you. Again, this is from Catherine Wadsworth at forty Meadow Lane. I believe that captures all the written correspondence uh, that we received regarding this application.
Okay, thank you very much. There was, many people had many things to say. Um, okay, commissioners, let me just double check. Any other questions, things that had come up, anything that needs clarifying? Anything? No. Okay, Kyla, last chance. Any questions, anything that's come up that you are, would like answered or addressed?
No, everything's been answered.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and I think we're all set. Uh, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now commissioners, um, any questions or concerns or anything you want to say? Are we?
So, I, I think that farms are no longer just a place where people grow vegetables. Um, they always have been and always will be meeting houses for the public. Where locals can get together and get a little closer to that food chain and enjoy nature. Um, so I think this makes perfect sense. I think it's in keeping with the intention. So, I'm good.
Okay.
Agreed.
Same, I think for one thing we need to come, limit the, the, limit the permit to one year for review for conforming.
Okay, okay.
I agree with all, all of that, but I would probably also want to put the, another condition on that, uh, we do some measurements. So that after the one year is up, uh, we have some tangible data, you know, to talk about with respect to the noise. And I don't think this needs to be an expensive endeavor or whatever. I think something rather informal, you know, somebody at the top of the uh, you know, the streets that are affected, uh, would be more than sufficient with uh, relatively.
I think there's guidelines.
There's got, there's what?
I think there's guidelines. Am I, am I not mistaken, Shen?
So in the town ordinance, there was a noise ordinance with respect to the decibel level and um, Kyla was correct. The, the metric is to register and take the measurement at the property line, not immediately.
Perfect.
At the sound source. And we have a noise meter. The planning department does and PD does.
Okay. Okay.
Rest of you are willing, I would probably suggest the.
Or we can count that in, okay.
A condition to, you know, satisfy some of the residents' concerns.
Okay. Yes, a lot of people had a lot of things to say and um, I, I, I personally feel this is a wonderful use of the space, echoing what you said, Matt. Farms are the basis of a community and we need to keep them. And as, as Jan Carpenter said, when she wrote Farmington in her letter, she capitalized the word farm. Which is completely, it's, it's in our name, it's in our roots. And um, I, I value the effort to try and continue to reinvent and reimagine and, and expand your touch. Because we need to do that and we need to keep the, the, we need to keep in touch with our food chain, definitely. we need to keep in touch with our food chain, definitely.
One thing I just wanted to, I didn't mention it here, but part of, I can't, I'm done, okay?
You're done.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Our turn to talk. So I, I think it is completely appropriate to add that it is a one-year permit, see how things go. And it is also completely appropriate to add a, to get some testing done just to validate and make sure we have data, objective data to look at.
Can I ask a question about the one-year permit or?
So it, the intent, and it was part of the agenda review, so it's limited for one year just to review. And if there's no, if there's no issues, then it, we come back and
Okay.
under new business for discussion.
Would I have to file a new?
No, 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 there wouldn't be files.
It's just expense wise.
Would not be filing a notification, it would just be a follow-up.
That's fine.
Right, we just come back and check in next spring to see, and if everything went well and smoothly, then that would be great. So, okay, so do we know what we're voting on? And Kyla, did you have any other inputs? Any comments or questions or just add to the discussion?
No, I just, I agree that this is a great effort. I've been attending some local farms recently and have learned a lot in that pursuit. And I think this is, you know, it just adds to that. I, I'm teaching the next generation about it too, my daughter. So I, I'm, you know, and it seems like you have a very big heart towards this from, you know, all, everybody who's come forward and spoken on your behalf. And I, I, I think this is a great, a really great effort. I'd just like to say that.
Thank you. Okay, so can I start with, can I have a motion? Do you want to craft that Bruce or?
Sure.
Okay.
Let me give it a whirl, see what I can do. I'd like to make a motion for approval for Jennifer Villa's application for a special permit for event permit for Music on the Farm Summer Series at three oh three and eighty-four eighty-seven Meadow Road with R forty CR zone with the following conditions that the permit is limited to one year for review of conformity, continuing two conditions in town ordinances. And that would include a, a sound measurement over the course of the events.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, thank you very much. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to let Scott know or hopefully he's watching and not listening?
I'm here.
There he is. Okay, welcome back Scott and thank you very much, Kyla. Okay, and our final agenda item is eighty-seven seventy-four Scott Swamp LLC. Please come on up to the podium, state your name and address and
Thank you commissioners, Attorney James Iogas, one before Bellevue Avenue in Bristol. I represent the applicant in this matter. This proper, property is located on the northerly side of Scott Swamp Road. It was formerly owned by the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation. And it was purchased by my client last year in June of twenty twenty-three. Notices were sent to our budding property owners. I believe we provided sort of certificates to the town, so they have those in their file. There are no wetlands that are associated with this site. Therefore, no wetlands referral or approval is necessary. The property is owned CR and we are here tonight requesting special permits to use the property for construction offices for the, secondly, for the removal of excess material from the site. And, and then thirdly, regarding the impervious surface in excess of fifty percent. We have a site plan that goes along with these special permits that we're also asking the commission to approve tonight. As I mentioned previously, the site was purchased from the state and they used it as a salt shed for road maintenance and things of that nature. The property is two point two seven nine acres and it is serviced by public water. There are no sewers in this area and a septic system has been designed and proposed at this time. The site is located on Route Six. It's approximately nine hundred feet west of the intersection of New Britton Avenue and Scott Swamp Road. And the site has a frontage on Route Six of approximately three hundred and sixty feet. There are two existing curb cuts on that property as we speak. We will reduce the curb cut slightly in terms of their width and make the easterly driveway the entrance to the property and the westerly driveway as the exit to the property. So it would be one way in and one way out. The appropriate one-way signage will be posted at the site. The driveways are designed to allow SU thirty trucks in and out of the site and a turning template has been included in the plan for review by the town. The sightline distance for the exit driveway is eight hundred and ninety-three to, to the east and seven hundred and fifty-one feet to the west. So there's significant sightline availability at this location. The posted speed limit in this area is forty-five miles an hour. Now, this plan will have to be approved by the State of Connecticut in as much as it has frontage on Route Six. Between the property line and Route Six, there is a buffer of about sixty feet that the State of Connecticut owns. Much of it right now is impervious material surfaces and we're going to be reducing that significantly if the state allows us to do that. I believe that the, it's currently about twelve thousand two hundred and eighty square feet of impervious surface. And we're going to reduce that by a significant amount to about forty-two hundred square feet. So we're reducing that in anticipation of our request that the site is going to be in excess of fifty percent. The site plan, if you would Shannon, maybe that would, there you go. There are four buildings that are going to be located on this site. Each unit will consist of a small office and a bathroom and the remainder of the unit will be open for inside storage and supplies. The units will each have a garage door, at least a garage door and an entry da, door for access to the premises. The units will not have floor drains and the utilities to the units are spe, are expected to be interior wall mounted units. There'll be heating units. I don't believe there's going to be any HVAC, no, no air conditioning in these units. The property will utilize exterior halo lighting and will include dimmers and motion sensors for after-hours security. The lighting plan is submitted and has a detail in your set of prints. And there's a photometric plan that indicates that there is zero light trespass. The proposed use for the property will be uses that are generally connected with general contracting services. Storage will be within each unit. And they'll be serviced, obviously, as I said, by city water and a septic system. Types of users would be pest control services, building maintenance services, HVAC contractors, electrical contractors, plumbing contractors. Those types of uses would be the people that we would lease the premises to. And there would be no outside storage allowed at this facility. The hours of operation for these, for these units are going to be normal business hours. That would run approximately seven AM to five PM in the afternoon. There is a landscaping plan that is associated with the submission and we have reviewed it with the town and we've agreed that the perimeter of the property shall contain a variety of trees. Our site engineer is here, Rob Hillbrand. He'll go through the site development plan with you in just a few minutes. We, we understand that the signage for the property is, is by, by virtue of a different application or a different permit. But we have shown on the print where our anticipated signage will be. There's going to be a monument sign located in the center of the property with not more than twenty-five cubic yards of, cubic feet of signage. And then each building will have a a placard above the door in compliance with the forty square feet requirement that's in our regulations. The special permit related to the impervious, impervious surface and earth removal, which are basically for the improvement of this property, will be addressed by Rob. It is our anticipation that the crushing permit would only last for three days. And again, it's, it's probably a two-day operation. We threw an extra day in there just to account for weather situation. So it's a very short-term permit. The, the material that's going to be crushed on site is going to be utilized on site. And we're going to use that, use that as our sub base for our paving. There's approximately nineteen to twenty thousand cubic yards of material on the site. Market conditions will determine how fast that gets removed from the site. We're asking for one year just to be on the safe side. I'm going to ask Rob to come up and address the site plan development and, and to discuss the impervious surface as it relates to our stormwater management on the site. And then we can answer any questions that the commission may, may have. We did get comments from the, from the town. Previously, we have responded to those comments in writing. I believe those have been incorporated into your package. I know Rob will talk about that a little bit and then we'll answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Rob Hillbrand, civil engineer, five seven five North Main Street, Bristol, our Hillbrand engineers and surveyors. As Jim had mentioned, I kind of just tried to go through kind of in the same order he did. So the site is serviced by water, Connecticut water has a, has a water main within Route Six. So we will be utilizing that water main to run water services to the buildings. So municipal water will be provided. Sanitary sewer is not available within this area. It's way up on New Britton Avenue is the closest. So we've worked with Farmington Valley Health, done test pits in the field, done all the proper testing, submitted a site plan to them with a full design. They've come back to us with a few minor comments, which we have resubmitted this week. So I would anticipate that we will get approval with no issue regarding the septic system for the site. So that would take care of that. The earth removal, Jim mentioned, I think one other item that we probably didn't, we didn't touch on is that we are working with our neighbor, which is also a farm to the west of us, Jilly Beans Farm. So there is kind of, if you've been, I'm sure many of you have been by this site many times, being it was a salt shed. So there is a berm between the two properties. So we work together to eliminate that berm during the earth removal, which is going to give them a lot more usable property that they don't have right now. And it will also benefit us as well. So we, we have submitted a, a, a letter and they were a part of the application. So that we're working together to, to make that, basically, we're going to level that area between the, the two properties and gain some usable space. So that, that's, that's on the west edge right up in this area here. And the crosshatched area that Shannon's touching is the, is the area within, within their property that we're working together for that. Jim had mentioned, it was about nineteen thousand yards on site. It is good, decent sand. We do have some local interest. But again, it, it's based on how quickly people could take it. And so we're, we're asking for that one-year time period to, 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 to remove that material. The crushing is, is all the asphalt and concrete from the demolition of the building. So basically, instead of trucking it all offsite to another facility where they crush it and turn it into usable material, we bring in a, a crusher and we run about a, a two-day operation. It's about fifteen hundred tons. And then all that material is utilized on-site for sub base under the pavement. So instead of trucking it away and trucking it back, we're going to make it and keep it on-site. So it, it does eliminate a lot of trucking. You know, although the trucking goes on Route Six and not through neighborhoods, but it does eliminate a fair amount of, a fair amount of trucking. Impervious, one, one thing I wanted to note on the impervious is visually, when you go by the site, we all think that the site begins at the fence. There's a chain link fence and there's a lot of impervious in the front. Sixty feet of that is all within the state right-of-way. So when we mentioned the impervious on the site is thirty-four point one four percent, that's just, that's on the subject property. So if you kind of meld into what's in the state property that we're taking away, the actual feel of the site is more like forty-seven percent impervious, except that's in the state right-of-way. But if you drive by, you don't know any difference. So in essence, when we're going to fifty-seven percent, it really feels like forty-seven percent and we're, we're going to fifty-seven. So it's, it's, although it is a jump and we are above the fifty, the site, if you take into account what's in the state right-of-way, is very close to the fifty now. So the regs do allow it. They have some contingencies on landscaping and stormwater. One of the stormwater items is that the full stormwater quality volume be stored and infiltrated on-site. We are doing a complete infiltration system. So all the water on our site is being infiltrated into the ground. So we've exceeded that requirement, the state's requirement, because we're keeping it all on-site. We've separated the on-site water from the state water. So everything in the state right-of-way will remain with the State of Connecticut and everything from our right-of-way in will remain on the site. We've done test pits and permeability, laboratory permeability tests to, you know, identify that the soils are capable of the infiltration. So we're actually not discharging any water to any neighbor or anybody. It's all staying on-site. We're using, over the last three or four years, we've been using a, a new product called the Flex Storm Insert, which is an insert that goes inside of a catch basin. It takes up oils and sediment and oils and we use it on industrial sites. We've used it like for Clean Harbors and Safety Clean. When we've done renovations to their stormwater systems, we found it works very well. It's relatively not crazy expensive. It can be replaced, the in, the interior parts can be replaced on a yearly basis by the owner relatively easy by topping, taking off the catch basin tops of just the grates and then replacing the internal pieces. So we found them to be, work really well. And we're, we're showing those on all the catch basins that are, are in here. There was comments from the town from the staff, which we didn't necessarily change the plans at this point. But we did have time to respond to the comments and writings. So I did submit that today to Shannon and Bruce saying, this is, you know, what we would do for that comment, which I, I think you may or may not have, I'm not sure. No, okay. All right. We could either go through those or
There's something that's concerning that I think you were going to address all of it.
Excuse me?
I think you were going to address all of it.
Yes.
I think there was, there was anything you took exception to.
No.
There's something you take exception to.
There was nothing glaring there. So it was, was just, I wanted to respond and say this is how we would handle it in writing. So we, we did that. I also want to mention that we, you know, staff was very helpful. We, we met a few times on this project and really knocked out a lot of the upfront questions. And, you know, it was, was helpful to bring a project to you, I think, with really not a lot of comments for the size of the project. So we, we appreciate that the staff helped us out to get to that point and get a lot of that done. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Are you done with the presentation or do you have more some?
Couple things.
Okay.
Yeah, I think incorporated in your pack, at least I hope it was, was a, a letter from the Economic Development Commission, which was dated April second, twenty twenty-four, addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission and I'll just read the last paragraph. Therefore, as chairperson of the Farmington Economic Development Commission and representing the consensus of the commission, I recommend to the Town Plan and Zone Commission that, that this application be approved. The entire letter was presented and it is part of the package. The only thing I'd like to at least look at a little bit with, with Rob is, is the landscaping plan as, as it applies to the property. And basically what we've, we've done and we've met with Shannon and Bruce in this regard. And we have provided a, a, a list of types of trees that can be planted in the landscaped areas so that it's not all one our varieties as we had initially thought. And you'll see that there are a significant number of trees that are going to surround the property. The planting plan is on the plan. It gives you the species and the, the, the number of plants that will be located on the site. You will see that it pretty much envelops the site. In the front of the property, we'll have groupings of trees as per the regulations. And again, there, there's going to be some variety as to those trees and those trees also are listed on the planting plan. So I just, I thought that was important to at least bring to the commission's attention. And and again, just addressing the pave, the area, it, it looks like it's a lot of pavement when you, but when you start running in the types of trucks that we're going to be utilizing for our tenants, they do, they do, do need some space to be able to maneuver in, in and out of the garages and through Space to be able to maneuver in and out of the garages and through the site, and again, it's one way in, one way out. And the sight lines are exceptional there, so if you have any questions, please, we'll be happy to answer. Go ahead, one more.
One other, one other comment that I have is as well as meeting with the town staff, I did meet with the condot representative for this district onsite. And we did go over traffic movements and signage and how we were going to handle utilities and Route six and so forth and so on, they will not. They don't like to look at it till it's approved, they really, but they will give you preliminary input, so we did, we did do that, and that's part of what's on this plan as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate your your presentation, okay, let's start with. With Commissioner questions, Matt, what questions do you have?
A few for you. The crushing activities, you said two to three days. And you're okay with the proposed eight AM to two PM timeframes?
Yes, that that that's in your regulations, we're aware of that.
Okay. All right, business hours, you have seven AM to five PM. And all lights will be on timers, that's all, all good?
Yeah, and in terms of the the hours of operation, again, you know, you run into a. Into electrician who's out on a job and he comes in, it it certainly in the summertime especially, you may run past the five o'clock hour, which is not unusual. But the seven o'clock start time, I think is a little more important, and we would adhere to that one with a little flexibility at the end of the day.
Makes sense. You mentioned no HVAC and I was thinking with these buildings, they're going to get really hot in summer. Is that something that's going to be on coming up in the future?
Well, i- if it is, there'll be interior wall mounts, but. Open the garage door with the air and, you know, I think that's that the that's the intent is not to have it air conditioned.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
All right, so again, we seem to be on the same page and same mindset. So the business hours taken care of, so you're you're basically gearing this towards storage for contractors? Is that what I'm gathering, because I mean. I I know if i- if I'm running an HVAC business or a plumbing business or an electrical business. I'm not running a business out of a ninety five degree steel building without any HVAC or AC. Yeah. So is there not going to be office space, are they going to be able to fit it out and build it out the way they want?
Yes, they will, and there there is an office and a bathroom in each unit, so there is going to be. A a facility there that a people that people can take calls out of, but it's going to be basically storage and. Load up and you go offsite and 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 certainly perform the services for your customers.
So, okay, so there it's not really intended to be a home base, it's more intended to be a load your vehicle and then get out to the job site.
I would say yes, for the most part, yeah, again, we don't know who the tenants are yet, so it's it's a little hard to to give you a a hard and fast answer, but. Given the HVAC type of plumbing contractor type of thing, it's load up and let's go.
Right, and and you know, I'm thinking back to the open the garage door for AC and it's not going to fly if you're trying to run a business out of there, but. Teach their own, I guess. The no vehicle washing on site.
Yeah, not a problem.
Not a problem.
Nope, not a problem, and that's why there's no floor drains inside the units, because we would think that that would have, you know, encouraged somebody to wash their vehicles.
And right, and that's what I, you know, I'm I'm thinking. The one thing that comes to mind, which you brought up earlier, i- it's not so much the plumber, the electrician, he can take it to the car wash, but you get somebody that's doing pest control. Or fertilizer.
Yep.
You know, he's washing those fertilizing machines out, is there, are you going to put that into the lease so that if they violate that, they're in violation of leasing?
That 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 is correct, there'll be, there'll be no outside storage, there'll be no washing of vehicles, all of these things will be incorporated in the lease, perfect.
Okay. And then the only other couple of things I have go to the design of the of the property, I guess, so. Landscaping. You know, I know it's listed there as grass, I think, you know, something that's not as maintenance, like a meadow mix or some type of. Material like that where you don't have to cut it as often, might be a better option.
I think that was one of the comments from the town, which we agreed with, so you're absolutely right about that.
Perfect, and then that retaining wall, so. I'm pretty familiar with construction and that's a big wall. And once you start getting up past the three feet and the six feet, you start needing GeoGrid and you start encroaching back, so. In that twelve foot section, have we already accounted for how far we're going to have to go back for all that hydraulic pressure?
Lawyer, engineer.
The the black wall that we're specing is the is a big, big black, black wall, not your traditional like architectural block.
Okay.
That you would see in a three, four, or five foot, so it's big black, it does have a face to it. They're two by two by six, and there is two two sections of of GeoGrid required, yes.
Perfect, okay. And then the only thing I would like to see. While it's being built. Is a tracking pad. I know we're going to have some rainy days with reclaiming all that asphalt and all that and and moving material. There's going to be some mud, the last thing I want is is mud tracking down Route six day in and day out.
Yeah, our intention too is to leave the bituminous apron that's there now from the state coming in, so we're not going to. Even during the construction, we're not going to tear out that apron, because it is actually the same spot as the exit to the site. So that first like fifty feet is going to stay, and then we'll have a construction entrance after that.
Perfect, okay, then.
And that it be swept and kept clean, it's a lot easier to keep. But if we can keep the bituminous there until the end, it's a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thanks for your presentation, I don't have any questions, I I see a lot of good words in the letter from the Economic Development Commission Chair. And it seems like the applicant has done similar projects in Newington and in the words of the Chair of E D C. They have been highly successful, quote unquote, so I'm I'm trusting that this project will also be successful. And thanks for bringing, well, I gotta thank the applicant for bringing the. This project into Farmington to build. Employment opportunities for small businesses. With that, I hand it over to Madam Chair.
Thank you, okay, Bruce.
Gentlemen, thank you for the for the presentation, just want to return very briefly to the crushing discussion. Did we agree that we were going to keep the the regulatory hours of eight to two and nothing on the weekend? That's correct. And I I take it from your presentation, you have right now very good relations with your, you know, farm stand neighbors. Probably coordinating those days, I think you said there were like three or something with them. Would probably be a good idea, keep that relationship good, because in case they have something planned or whatever, you don't want to over overlap with them, that would. That would really be the only thing I could add to that. Yeah, they they've been working with us right along on the plan, and and that's why they gave us the letter and co-sign the application, because. We 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 do have a good relationship with them and we're going to try to maintain that, of course. Sounds good, thank you, I have no further question.
Okay, great, thank you, okay, Scott, how about you, any questions?
Yeah, no, I think all my fellow commissioners asked all the questions that I had, thank you though.
Okay, thank you, and Kyla, any questions from you?
No, no questions from me, thank you.
Okay, so it's my turn. I have a couple of questions, and one considers concerns, you used a term about a truck, a truck size. I mean, I'm a visual, what is that, how big are, are we talking vans, are we talking box trucks, are we talking eighteen wheelers? That's the, I I just need a visual.
The SU thirty vehicle is is like a a large box truck.
Okay.
And that's ba- basically what you're looking at, but it also could apply to like a contractor's truck with a trailer behind it. So quite often you might see a carpenter pull up to a job with a with a large diesel pickup, and then they have. Twenty eight foot trailer behind them with all their tools, so that also is a common radius used for trucks like that, that contractors would have.
Okay, okay, that helps.
So it's not, it's not eighteen wheelers.
Okay, great, and correspondingly, the garage doors will be.
Fourteen feet.
Four, okay, that's what I was wondering, fourteen feet, okay. The other question is, this was, has been a salt shed for years, I'm sure. Was there any remediation needed when you took it over, was there any soil infiltration or anything like that? You know, just that stuff's been sitting there.
No, the state was not required to do anything, I don't believe it was a hazardous material, but most of it's been on on pavement. For the time that it was there and it was all removed, so there's there's very little. And again, with our our storm drainage system, we're going to hold on to all of our water, so it's not that it's going to go anywhere else.
No, that's great, I'm I'm very glad to hear, because that was was there for a long time, it looked like, and I'm glad to hear that we figured it out and. It didn't, we didn't have any remediation issues, and then this is more of a curiosity question, those billboards. Are they on the, are they on that piece or are they on an?
They're on the state land.
Okay.
And I think what we're going to do is we're not going to plant trees in front of them, so that we don't block them in the future, and that's been the the general.
Okay, that that.
Diagram that you see in front of you.
Okay, I was just curious, we don't have a lot of billboards in Farmington, so I was wondering.
Is that good or bad?
How those got in there. I'm glad we don't have a lot of billboards, it's my personal aside. So, okay, I think that was all of my questions. So, anyone in the room have any questions or comments? Seeing none, okay, Shannon, could you ask online?
If anyone's called in online to offer comment on the eight seven seven four Scott Swamp. Road LLC application for special permit and site plan approval to construct contractor storage buildings. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone has called in to offer comment on eight seven seven four Scott Swamp Road LLC for the contractor. Storage buildings, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised, and the only written correspondence, which Attorney Diogus already entered into the record and I had up on the screen. Was the letter from Mr. Wadsworth, the Economic Development Commission Chair. And that was all provided to the commission in advance and was posted to the website with the application.
Great, thank you very much, okay, before we close the hearing, any further questions or from the commissioners? Yes, Bobby.
Yeah, I just have one quick clarification, I'm just being curious, don't even bother, is it going to be gated?
Oh, I'm going to ask that too.
It's not going to be, it's going to be wide open, okay. Gotcha, okay, perfect, yep.
Thank you, I was going to ask.
I forgot to write it down.
Uh, okay, um, thank you, and if everyone else has had all their questions answered, Scott, Kyla. Any last minute questions on the online?
All set.
Okay, super, okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and. Time for some discussion and the. My feeling, the discussion is we need to, there's a a couple of asks going on in this, and I want to make sure we cover them all. We have the special permit, site plan approval, we have crushing. And I'm looking at my notes, was there four things or three kind of separate things, Shannon, I'm.
Special permit for the use. For intensive construction and the impervious coverage and accept fifty percent and site plan approval.
Okay, so four different things.
It's at the commission's discretion, you can vote at them all at once. You can vote and separate them out, and if you are going to separate them, then my suggestion was that the. Special use permit and site plan approval go together as one, and then it would be the intensive construction and then the impervious coverage.
Okay.
Given unless there's concern with one that there may be a different voting.
Okay.
Metric, then they could all be voted together.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think personally that. All four kind of go together and they make sense, I don't see a reason to separate those into a separate vote.
Good, agree.
Okay. Kyler or Scott, do you have any other feelings?
Uh, nothing that comes to mind.
Okay.
Good too.
Okay, okay, then I think we can handle this with one vote, make it easy to handle. So I ask for a motion, please.
All right, can I just get some clarification here?
Give it a shot.
Special permit and site plan approval. And also the impervious coverage exceeding fifty percent?
Yes. And intensive construction. And if you, I think the catchall would be as presented. Because they've agreed to staff comments.
Give it a shot.
Engineering and planning.
Like to make a motion to approve the application by eight seven seven four Scott Swamp LLC for special permit. And site plan approval. As well as. Approving the impervious coverage exceeding fifty percent, intensive construction. As presented. For the storage buildings on lot eight seven seven four and one seventy two Scott Swamp Road, CR Zone.
Second, okay. Everyone knows we're all good? Okay, then I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you for your presentation and good luck. And make it prettier than the salt shed.
Right. Exactly.
It's got to be an improvement, exactly, thank you.
Have a good night, you're welcome. All right, everybody, I know tip offs happened.
That's okay.
So this should go pretty quick, the planners report items are. Should be very quick.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know. So close and yet so far.
I was going to say, have they tipped off yet?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Okay. So first up, Farmington Land Trust owns property at forty five Reservoir Road, it's at the intersection of Reservoir Road and Diamond Glen. Uh, open space, the Farmington Reservoir is off the page here on page right. And apparently, and I used Google Street View, I couldn't find it, and I have, I didn't drive it over the weekend. There is a Farmington Land Trust sign on Diamond Glen, they would like to move it out to Reservoir Road. The land trust signs all look the same, the commission permitted probably a year and a half to two years ago. A standardized sign for all of their properties, it is going to be the. Eighteen by thirteen, eighteen inch by thirteen inch sign. And I've had conversations with the members of the land trust that I've just asked that it be outside. The site triangle, so as you're come up to Diamond Glen and the stop sign. That the sign is back behind that, so it does not create any sightline issues. So if there's no comments, question, if there are comments or questions, I'm happy to ans- answer them, but the intent would be to approve the sign at the staff level. And proceed unless there's concerns otherwise.
Yeah, I think it's great, the sign where it is, it's kind of lost in the foliage. And you can't really see it, so moving it out would be great, I've walked there recently, so. And walked up Diamond Glen and and yeah, it would be great to get it out where they can see it, because it's much clearer where they're proposing it, so. I think it's a great move.
Okay.
Anybody?
Consensus. Okay. I'm going to, anyone else going once, going twice, all right, we're going to keep moving. Uh, item two, Calco Construction permitted and was approved to construct eleven homes on Lejordan Way. The detention basins are in, the sanitary sewer line is in. A majority of the drainage system is in and other utilities are coming in, they're starting to box out the roadway. For Lejandit, Lejandan Way, the applicant has requested to construct three model homes. At lots three, six and eight. It's permitted in the subdivision regulation under two point seven of the subdivision regulation with the commission's concurrence. Staff's been out there, the site's actually pretty tight from an erosion control standpoint. Staff's been out there. The site's actually pretty tight from an erosion control standpoint. Um, we were uh firm with the contractor and the applicant, and it seems to have worked well. The detention basins are fairly well established. Everything's in in fairly decent shape. Staff does not have any concern with these model homes being started. So again, it's lots three, uh so kind of towards um, yeah, Copper Mine, and then six and eight are back towards the further end.
Okay.
And this is a standard request that we got.
Okay. That makes sense. I'm glad to hear the detention basin seems to be working with the rain and everything and it's.
Yeah, they got it well established last year.
Good. Thank heavens.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good to me.
No concerns?
No concerns.
No concerns. All right, moving on. George's patio, if anyone's been down by Unionville School, they George's, they've got the existing hardscape patio. Through COVID, they, a- as we did with many of the restaurants, additional exterior seating was permitted. They did not get rid of the exterior seating the last two summers, and now uh and in fact, at one point, I think last summer, keystone was put in. Of course, that's not a very stable sur- surface, so they're looking to extend the patio pavers out to the edge of the sidewalk. It has already been ripped up and boxed out.
Okay, thinking positive.
Uh, they were anxious. They were, but you know, again, I think a contractor contractor had some available time, and so away they went. So it's boxed out. Uh unless the pavers went in this weekend, the pavers are not in as of yet. Um. So the request is for the the pavers, they have, um, they, I believe, will be approximately four additional seats. Those four seats then come out of the inside because they can't staff fully the patio and fully the interior. And uh flower boxes are going to be used to enclose the patio area because um the liquor license requires uh the exterior patio to be enclosed. So, and flower boxes, as long as they're thirty inch or thirty-six inch high, uh meets that requirement to enclose the area.
Okay, so those will be along the sidewalk edge?
They'll be along the edge. Yeah, they'll be just off the sidewalk because technically the right-of-way line is about one foot behind the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense.
So going once, guys, so same thing, we're gonna, it's stay at staff level unless there's a concern, we're just gonna keep on moving. All right.
Okay.
All right. All right. Next one. Mr. Ocalini has a fence. I thought it was aerial in here. So seven ninety Farmington Avenue is off of the Backage Road behind Route Four, so where the Chase Bank is, right? We've got the new Backage Road that came in. Seven ninety Farmington Avenue is behind that. Dave Ocalini now owns all of the condo complex of seven ninety Farmington Avenue. Mr. Ocalini also owns three and five Mountain Spring Road. The residence is further to the north. Mr. Ocalini is looking to uh place fence, uh split rail fence along his property line. He also abuts the Farmington Country Club. He's, so the fence on the residential property, uh uh four-foot split rail fence requires no review and approval with the commission. Four rail, or sorry, three rail, four-foot-high, three-rail split split rail fence on seven ninety Farmington Avenue because rather than running on his property line, he's requesting the fence be placed approximately twenty-five to thirty feet in on seven ninety Farmington Avenue. That um that allow for um just this buffer to be maintained between the commercial property and the residential property. So that this property is zoned in the Farmington Center, Farmington Village Zone, and because it's commercial property, then the fence review rests with the commission. I did get this over to the Architectural Design Review Commission um via email this afternoon, and none of the committee members have any concern with this. It's going to be a standard pressure-treated pine split rail fence. You can't see it from Farmington Avenue. You probably can't see it from the Backage Road. So unless there's a concern, we are going to continue and sign off on the fence approval form for this request.
Makes sense with me. Go for it. You guys got it.
Have fun.
Okay. Final update has to do with fifteen Farm Springs Road. The pickleball courts are in. They are CO'd. Um, they have a soft opening for online reservations. My husband and I tinkered with it this weekend. It's not quite set up, so I will be speaking with uh speaking with them for the the online reservation, but uh they anticipate doing a grand opening in May when the bar and restaurant will open. And the bar restaurant um individuals will be apparently in charge of the pickleball courts and the rentals. So there is an online rental system set. With the CO being issued for the pickleball courts and everything, the courts and law-associated locker rooms and restroom facilities all CO'd, then uh we issued, I released another ten percent of the residential COs. So at this point, uh we are holding back just five percent, which I think it it amounts to approximately ten or eleven apartment units that we will continue to hold that CO until the restaurant, and we'll take a look at everything else. Um, but they've, they've completed their end of the deal, so I signed off on the uh, the CO is up to ninety-five percent.
Okay, that sounds great. What's the restaurant? Did they, have we heard what it is or their name or?
Name.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's a local rest. I I believe um Pete Ramshandini, who had done Tap Rock, is partnered with another individual to to open that restaurant, but I don't have, uh, I don't believe there's a name as of yet.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
And that's all I have.
Pickleball, pickleball is taking over the world, so. Exactly. Okay, that sounds great. Anybody have any questions, anything? Burning a hole in your pocket? Do you need to ask Shannon? If not, let's, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Like a make a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And so moved. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned at nine forty. Go Huskies.